On tonight's meeting to order, roll call please.
Trustee Braden.
Aye.
Trustee Levin.
Here.
Trustee Marabella.
Here.
Trustee McCarthy.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Whitmore.
Here.
Mayor's room.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation of the village's religious and lead us in prayer. Please bow your heads in prayer. Blessed we are you, Lord God of all creation, whose goodness fills our hearts with joy. Blessed are you who have brought us together this evening to work in harmony and peace. Strengthen us with your grace and wisdom. May everything we say and do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help, so that all our prayers and works may begin in you and by you. Be happily ended. Glory and praise to you forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By Adam, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st, 2023 River Board Meeting.
Aye.
Discussion on the minutes. Roll call, please.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Move on to mayor's report. I need a motion to adopt a res- appointment resolution appointing Debbie Melusio as village clerk. So, will some second? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item two, I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution appointing Deborah Melusio as foyer officer. Some discussion? Roll call, please.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item three, I need a motion to adopt appointment resolution appointing Al Rider as part-time police officer.
Second.
Okay, first on motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item four, I need a motion to adopt a resolution regarding the release and non-release of certain minutes of closed session. So, will some?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item five, I need a motion to approve the resolution honoring Donna Capi and wishing her happiness in retirement. So, will some?
Second.
All right, I'm gonna read this resolution. Whereas Donna Capi has served as the administrative assistant for the Winter Harbor Fire Department for seventeen years, having first joined the village as an administrative assistant in July of 2006. And whereas Donna devolved its dexterous personnel and record management system for a very unforgiving and complex fire department operation. Whereas Donna has announced her retirement effective on December 31st, 2023, with an intention of spending more time with her family and friends. And whereas throughout her time working with the village, Donna worked very effectively with a broad group of elected officials, employees, volunteers, and the general public tirelessly, respectfully, compassionately, and kindly, with unflagging good humor. And whereas Donna has been more than just an employee, she showed abiding love for the members of the Winter Harbor Fire Department and received that love in return from the members of the Winter Harbor Fire Department. Whereas some of Donna's coworkers have added their own words on this occasion, which include the following. Fire chief Rocky Campanella, Donna has been truly the heart of the department. She took pride in knowing all aspects of the job. Donna always found a way to make the department more efficient. A mob figure to the young people of the fire department who would go out of the way to make sure their payroll and scheduling was handled properly. And task asked, any task asked of her by me was performed without hesitation. Donna will be missed immensely. I wish her joy in retirement. Shawna Hasky, Assistant Chief, in the past seventeen years, Donna has taught me a lot about being a better person. Her laugh and love and the love that she shows to everyone at our department is what makes her so special. Donna is always the first person to offer help to someone who is in need and is always there to provide emotional support to everyone around her. The hallways will be super quiet without her. I wish her the best of luck and I hope to see her at the station for coffee business. Julie Rittenhouse, a village clerk, Donna's loyalty and dedication runs so deep. She is a friend to all she meets. She is always ready to help anyone with anything. It has been a pleasure to work with her. She will be greatly missed by many. We will keep her touch in retire- we will keep in touch in retirement. Congratulations, Donna. And Debbie Melusio, Deputy Chief, when I started working here twelve years ago, Donna was one of the first people to come over and introduce herself to me. She was so welcoming and made me feel less nervous during those first days. I will forever appreciate that. Donna is always so helpful with the village's administrative issues. Her wealth of knowledge and overall kindness will be greatly missed. Enjoy your retirement. And Robert Long, our village attorney, Donna has always exceeded the requirements of her job, from creating methods of accounting to more than meeting the needs of unanticipated litigation. She has shown great creativity and dedication. Moreover, she's been a joy to work with and greeted us all with a cheerful smile. Whereas these few words can only attempt to reflect integrity, character, and charity. And the mayor and board use them to stand as a short and incomplete summary of what she has meant to this village. Now therefore be resolved by the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois as follows. Section one, Donna Capi, beloved administrative assistant, is honored as a truly outstanding member of the fire department whose dedication and legacy shall be honored gratefully and perpetually by our people and this board. Section two, Donna Capi is thanked for her years of dedicated work and wished greatly joy, great joy and happiness in retirement. Section three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage and shall be placed in the permanent records of this village as testament to her enduring character and tireless contributions to this village. I will turn it over to our fire chief, Rocky Campanella. All right, Donna, come on up. I jot down a few notes to say, as we, on behalf of the village, present you with a trophy, for lack of better terms. Thank you for giving me the honor to speak on retirement of Donna. I started chief two and a half years ago. And looking back, I don't know what I would've done without Donna. Donna is a heart and soul of the department. Our little department has many nuances over there that Donna has mastered how to deal with. Whether it be payroll billing, helping manage schedules, or pretty much anything, right? She's done it all very well. It's not easy, but you made it look easy. And these are gonna be big shoes to fill. Yep. Now please enjoy your retirement and keep your phone close. I'd like to invite the firefighters association up for a few words for Donna.
And both.
Introduce yourselves, fellas.
Good evening, Fire Department Permanent, Josh Keane.
Fire Department AMT, Travis Franklin, the association president. So Donna, this is a very big hole in our life that we're gonna have without you. So on behalf of all of the firefighters and officers for the village of Winter Harbor and the members of the fire association, I present you this, present you with this plaque.
Do you have anything to say, Donna? You weren't getting off that.
How can you not? I mean, guess you're like my other family. So I've known you for how long? I don't know, but I'm gonna come back and visit you, so watch out. It has been good. It has been good. We've all had our ups and downs, but you know what? It's been great. It was a great part of the department. I'm glad to get to work.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd be remiss without saying Kelly Stone's gonna fill her shoes and has been working to make the transition seem like. So thank you. Donna, I'd just like to say one thing, too. On Thursdays, I'm usually here at Village Hall, almost the entire day. And sometimes on Tuesdays, but my door's open and Donna happens to be walking by. She always comes in and says hi, sits down, we talk for quite a while. I mean fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe longer unless I get interrupted by a resident. But I really wanna thank you, Donna. I mean, the conversations we've had have been wonderful. And the smiling face coming in my office, it's always nice to see you. I'm gonna miss seeing you. But you always kept me abreast and kept me informed when new firefighters came on the fire department. I'm sure that'll happen with Kelly. So, but thank you for everything. I need a roll call.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item six, I need a motion, I need a motion to adopt a resolution honoring Julie Rittenhouse and wishing her happiness in retirement.
Second.
I'll read this resolution as well. Whereas Julie Rittenhouse has served as a village clerk for seven years, having first joined the village as an assistant in November 2017. And whereas Julie later impressed her supervisor, Jana J. Lee, with her talents, particularly her innate kindness and people skills, and was promoted to deputy clerk. And whereas Jana passed away following a long and brave fight with cancer on July 12th, 2016, and thereafter Julie was appointed intern clerk. Then later on was appointed to several terms as village clerk in her own right. And whereas Julie has announced her retirement effective on December 31st, 2023, with an intention of spending more time with her family and friends as well as trip. And whereas throughout her time working with the village, Julie worked very effectively with a broad group of elected officials, employees, volunteers, and the general public tirelessly, respectfully, compassionately, and kindly, with unflagging good humor. And whereas, like her immediate predecessor, Julie has been more than just an employee. She is the very heart and soul of the community, reflecting a great and abiding love for Winter Harbor, its people, and its beautiful setting on the shores of Lake Michigan. And whereas some of Julie's coworkers have added their own words on this occasion, which include the following. As mayor, I want to thank you for your seventeen years of unwavering service to the village of Winter Harbor. On a personal note, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. My wife and I value your friendship and look forward to its continuation well beyond your retirement. We wish you the best in your retirement. Debbie Melusio, deputy clerk, Julie has been an honor to work with over the past twelve years. We started as coworkers and then in 2016, she became my boss. During all those years, she has been a great friend, mentor, and support system to me. Her constant offering to help and teach will be as greatly missed as her genuine kindness and caring about people. Tim Nergard, Superintendent of Public Works, happy retirement and congratulations to Julie. It's been an honor to work with Julie and I wish her all the best. In my time working alongside her, I always knew I could depend on her assistance, insight, and professionalism. It's been great to work with her over the years. Her hard work and dedication has left such an impact on the village and me as a colleague. Best wishes. And Robert Long, our village attorney, Julie has never been someone just working in a government job. She has always been a true friend to many. Generous to a fault, compassionate and kind, patient and forgiving, a genuine person not afraid to show her love for one and all in this community. She will be missed, but I sincerely hope she enjoys the best that life has to offer in her retirement. And then Dave Alacon, our village administrator, I got this is Julie's line that has resonated over the last two years working with her. Starting a new job in a new community can be intimidating. Thanks to Julie's leadership and strong work ethic, my transition was made much easier. Julie quickly became a valued coworker and most importantly, a valued friend to me. Best wishes on your retirement. Whereas these few words can only attempt to reflect her integrity, character, and charity. And the mayor and board use them to stand as a short and incomplete summary of what she has meant to this village. Now therefore be it resolved by the village of Winter Harbor, Lake County, Illinois as follows. Section one, Julie Rittenhouse, beloved village clerk and pillar of our community, is honored as a truly outstanding member of the village whose dedication and legacy shall be honored gratefully and perpetually by our people and this board. Section two, Julie Rittenhouse is thanked for her years of dedicated work and wished great joy and happiness in retirement. Section three, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon passage and shall be placed in the permanent records of this village as testament to her enduring character and timeless contributions to this village. And section four, in recognition of Julie's selflessness, she is excused from signing this resolution. Debbie, of course, Debbie Melusio is authorized to witness it. I need a roll call.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried. Julie, I'd like you to come around and talk. You can kick him. Don't be a trouble. Yeah, Julie, I don't worry. I'm gonna read it. In recognition and sincere appreciation of your sixteen years of distinguished service and dedication to the village of Winter Harbor, Julie Rittenhouse, best wishes for a happy retirement, December 19th, 2023. Congratulations. Like she said, she'll do the same. Clerk, clerk, respond it.
No, I really appreciate my coworkers and my colleagues. This is the best place to work. And without them, I wouldn't look as good as I do. All my compliments, I appreciate so much, but it's the whole group. We work very well together. It's a small group of people, but they're fantastic. And I will miss every one of you, but I'm happy to retire. Thank you so much.
I wanted to comment. You know, when I first came on in 2017 as the mayor, learning, you know, had a lot of learning to do, running meetings. And she'd always say, here we go. We need to get out of closed session. She'd always be telling me, my right-hand person here. So I really appreciate her. I know Debbie's gonna do a marvelous job, but I will miss you. I really will miss you. She's helped me with the pension, the place pension fund. Checks need to be made up. I walk in there and she knows what to do and I can turn around and leave and it gets done. So it's gonna be huge. It's gonna be a big shoes to fill, but I'm sure Debbie's gonna do a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor's, we do a roll call. No, we didn't. We did. Thank you. Mayor's report. Another thing I'd like to bring up is we had our Santa run December 2nd. Very successful, very successful this year. Two years in a row, second annual. Would like to thank all the departments, the place, the power of public works, parks and rec, the administration, everything that they did. Santa and Mrs. Claus, everything that they did to make sure it was successful. And then just Monday night, we had our wrapping for Toys for Tots. Would like to thank everyone that came out. We had a lot of people. I was there, my wife was there, Julie was there. There's a lot of people there. So we really wanna thank everyone for coming out. And it's gonna be a lot of kids in the village. I'm gonna have a very merry Christmas. So that's all I have. I will move on to village administrator report. Our village administrator is not here with us tonight, so we'll move on to clerk's course. Done?
I had everything set already.
Very good. So we move on to new business, committee reports, administration, and community development committee, trustee Braden.
I make a motion to approve the tax payable warrant 2023-9 in the amount of $341,000.899.
Discussion. I would like to, unless you have something to say. The part of that report for transparency, the SCIRE hot stretcher lift, $27,041.93, we paid that out. However, with the power of fire protection, I believe, isn't it, Rocky? Has given us that money back. So it doesn't really cost us anything. That's gonna be a wash. Just wanted everyone to know that. Ambulance billing, which is the ground emergency medical transport of $34,545.31, that, we collected double that, but we have to do, because of the country, we have to pay half of it back to the state. So that's pretty much, not really a wash, but we made $34,000 and we had to pay out $34,000. And then the final fishing peer payment of $17,136.50. Just to let everyone know, that pier was totally paid for by the Lions Club, Winter Harbor Lions Club. We didn't pay it on. We just had to pay it out of ours, but Lions Club paid us for that. So just for that purpose, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we're only paying a small portion of it, but that's all I had. Roll call?
I didn't get a second.
That's all.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did not hear you. Okay. Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next, I have a motion to approve the workers' compensation insurance renewal.
Second. Okay, any discussion on that? Sunday night's a lot.
I heard you.
Okay, roll call.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And finally, I have to, I have moved to set aside the roll for the president and the board of trustees to waive the first and second reading of the approval of the tax levy ordinance and adopted presented.
Second. One discussion, anybody have anything? I just wanna say, this is exactly, this tax levy is exactly what we did last year. No difference. That's all I have to say on that, so.
The dollar amount is minimal if you look at your tax bill. For a hundred thousand dollar house, it's not much of a.
Twenty-seven dollars for an intercal.
It's not much of an increase. People always, it's always brought up because we do pay high taxes in Winter Harbor. I pay a lot of taxes. Most of it goes to sign back to schools and just so people are aware. We do pay high taxes, but the portion that comes to the village is very minimal.
Thank you, trustee Marabella. Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Okay, trustee Braden, we move on to public safety. Trustee White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for taking care of my first two items on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I move that we approve payment to health care and family services, GEMT for the amount of $34,545.31, as the mayor discussed.
Second.
Second. All right. A discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And second item here, I make a motion to approve payment to striker for a power load cot system for $27,041.31.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Can I add anything?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
I do think I need to recognize the Winter Harbor Fire District. Again, this is all their money. They asked if we needed anything. Said, yes, we need a lot of things. This is what's on our list right now.
The hobby list.
They went all over it, thought it was a great idea, which it is. It's gonna reduce injuries and make our jobs a lot easier, or their jobs a lot easier. And so it's much appreciated from the fire district.
I will say one thing. When I was in Utah, next to our son's house, a roofer fell off the roof. And the ambulance came and they had a striker. And one guy could manipulate that, put it in the ambulance. It was just amazing how he did that. But it really saves those, you know, a lot of physical work for the paramedics or whoever's doing that. It's worth the money.
Yeah, one serious back injury, this will pay for itself by moving it.
I was gonna say that, in all favor, prevent workmen's comp. Thank you, Winter Harbor Fire Protection. Thank you so much for all that you do for the village. Okay, roll call.
Braden.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Marabella.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion carried.
I move that we approve the intercalum union agreement between the village of Winter Harbor and Winter Harbor Fire Protection District. So.
Second.
We got a second. Okay, discussion?
There's something that needs to be done. One of the members were here last meeting, so it's very important. Now, it covers the broad area that's not in our area for people that don't know. So their money's come from other people and they contribute because we protect their homes and their families.
Right, and this agreement is specifically for the striker power load because they technically gave it to us. This is releasing, legal terms five, I might need help, releasing now that we're, now the owner of it and they take no liability over that piece of equipment?
It's one way to look at it, yeah.
Well, I'm not a lawyer.
Oh, I could go on for an hour. Would you like me to? Oh, I could go on for an hour, would you like me to?
No.
Thank you, Rocky. Anybody else? How, sorry, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Move to approve, uh, to adopt a safe driving policy for the fire department?
Second. Any discussion on that? You mean they don't drive safely now?
They do, but we're gonna ensure they continue to drive safely.
Okay, all right, roll call, please.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Move to approve and authorize the expenditure of Northwestern University Center for Public Safety School of Police Staff in Command for forty-four hundred dollars.
Second. Okay, second, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie, very good, thank you, trustee White, we move on to public works and recreation, trustee Maribella.
Move to, uh, set aside the rules, president and the board of trustees to weigh the first and the second readings of the ordinance, spending a water recapture for another five years for Mr. William Street, and adopt as presented.
Second. Discussion? How many years has that been done?
In total?
Yeah.
For this one? I think this is twenty years.
I was on, I was at trustee.
The, uh, yeah, I know, some of these, uh, some of these recasters go on for years and years, but, yeah, and we've had debates about that in the past, of whether there should be a strict timeframe, some, some communities, they, they give the one twenty-year period, others, they do it like we do. I'm not sure which one's fair or which one's better, but the idea is, of course, if you put in a water line and somebody else taps on for it, you ought to get about a bit of having extended the water and making available the most.
I just wanted to ask, 'cause I, I know I remember seeing that years ago, so, all right, any other comments, or, roll call, please.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
All right, Sergeant Ryan, I have motion for request for approval to upgrade the light fixtures, to the common energy efficiency program for the Slater Building, and a cost of the village of twenty-three thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and seventy-one cents, to be funded through capital improvement.
Second.
Any discussion? Is that what you were talking about, Tim, when you walked in?
Uh, yes, so, I just got an email, so everybody's aware, um, ComEd is also running a public sector, public sector promotional campaign, offering an additional fifteen percent.
Off the cost.
Off of what's.
Off that twenty-three thousand.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other discussions?
Was this budgeted, Tim?
Yes, this is budgeted and part of the capital improvement bond that we approved, uh, beginning of the budget year.
Perfect, all right, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Third item is motion for request for approval to upgrade the light fixtures to the common energy efficiency program for Village Hall Complex, including administration, community development, police department and fire department, and a cost of the village of forty-five thousand one hundred forty-one and forty-eight thousand cents, to be funded through capital improvement.
Second.
Also, fifteen percent off of that?
Fifteen, yes, sir.
Also budgeted?
Also correct.
Thank you.
Good, all right, any other questions? All right, roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Fourth item is motion for request for approval of partial payment to Peter Baker himself, in the amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, for the two thousand twenty-three street rehabilitation project.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right, roll call, please.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Fifth item is motion for the request of approval of the final payment to Peter Baker himself, in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Got a second.
We're gonna put, yeah, second, we're gonna pay it all as one, but it had to be done.
That's all I was gonna ask.
It had to be done this way for.
Okay, thank you, I was gonna ask, why wasn't those just combined, so, thank you. Roll call.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
So item six is a motion for request of approval to purchase a two thousand twenty-five Peterbilt F sixty-seven TX nine single axle chassis, single axle chassis from Lindisso Equipment Sales for one hundred fifty thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Second. All right, discussion, what is that?
So, this is, Tim can do further, but from what I know, from talking with the guys and, and the mechanics that we got now, most of the public works departments are going with these newer Peterbils, and they're better made, they're just better for what we're doing and for parts, and for the mechanic in general, when he's working on stuff, if there's an item he can't get, he can go to another town or another place that we're friends with now and get set parts if they have them on the shelf, the bigger places that have more of these, so, they're better made, and mostly, they're supposed to last longer, so, Tim can expand as he wants.
What is this used for?
This is our big plow truck.
Oh, big, okay.
Basically, that's what it is, it's replacing our two thousand GMC plow truck, um, this was part of the fleet replacement program that we talked about in the budget year, um, at this time, the Peterbilt is what was available, they had twenty or so coming in, so that's why we put it on the docket now, and then, once it's built out, it takes another year to build it out, and, uh, it'll be another roughly a hundred thousand dollars, so altogether, it'll still be under budget of what we allotted for the plow truck.
Is this gonna take a year to get?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And it's only used for states.
Yeah. Thank you, Tim, thank you, trustee, any other comments or questions, all right, roll call, please.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Seventh is motion for the request for approval of the snow and ice control manual, revised two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion on that. Roll call, please.
Brayden?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maribella?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie.
Item seven, we're handing over to Mr. Whitmore.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, this year, we had our annual, uh, holiday decorating contest, we had fourteen participants, um, this year, David made it even more, um, better than we usually have it, it's having the live map, um, online, having pictures of all the homes, videos of the homes, um, so I really thank him for putting that together, um, our winners, I don't know if anyone around here has seen the houses, but there were some amazing houses, a lot of detail, a lot of time and energy went into some of these.
Yeah, they were amazing.
Yeah, so, um, our first place winner was twenty-three, um, twenty-three hundred Fifth Street, um, that was the, one with the nineteen-sixties original camper.
Right.
Um, she let us go inside, everything was original, um, he bought it for his wife, born nineteen-sixty, so we got her that one, um, our second place was, uh, actually right next door, um, four-four-one Holdridge Avenue, and then our third place winner was, um, uh, one-eighth Park Avenue, um, that one too, huge display, a lot of time and effort went into it, uh, and then our, um, inflatable was one-two-two-one Franklin Avenue, um, so, yeah, I just thank everybody for participating, and if you haven't had a chance, uh, definitely go around and take a look at all the homes that participated.
I would have had trouble, because those are the ones I would have picked too, I mean, I don't know about the inflatable, but the other three, but, good Lord, there's so many homes.
Yeah.
More than I've ever seen before decorated, and some were decorated, but didn't enter the contest.
Yeah, definitely.
So, yeah, nice job, Justin Whitmore, putting that together. All right, uh, we move, move on to public comments, if you'd like to say anything or present or address the board, we just ask you to stand up to the podium, give us your name and your address. Okay, you know, so we move on to unfinished business, I'll start down, trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, um, so, happy retirement, Julie and Donna, um, Julie will definitely be missed, um, congratulations to Deborah and Al, and again, thank you for, um, everyone who participated in this year's decoration contest, uh, and thank you for everyone, um, within the village that put in so much effort and work into, um, Santa Day, it definitely went off without a hitch, and, uh, we, we had a lot of participation that day, and then Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. Trustee Brayden?
Um, I want to congratulate Donna and Julie both on their retirement, um, it will be crazy most, um, congratulations to Al and Debbie on their new spot, um, I want to congratulate all the holiday decorating contest winners, that's awesome, and finally, I just want to give my sincere appreciation to the fire protection group for all of their stuff and the house safety.
Thank you, trustee Brayden, trustee McCarthy.
Um, so I know, I saw there was a lot of trustee and staff participation for, um, the Santa Day, uh, I miss it, I ended up being sick, I was supposed to be the Grinch, I was not the one in the costume, but Fritz, I was told you were gonna step into my spot and get in a Grinch costume, and you weren't in there, no?
No. It's just Lord.
Yeah, um, yeah, I was sick, I couldn't make it, but it was just amazing to see everything and just how everything's getting, you know, bigger and more, uh, each year, you know, more houses in the decorating, the reverse Santa parade, you know, which no one even thought of years ago, and I think when David brought it up last year, we're like, oh, you know, well, we'll see, we'll try this out, and now people are like, you know, if we were to not do that next year, you know, they'd go insane, so it's crazy, and then, you know, sound, well, sorry, you know, we have, you know, great staff that are willing to participate in that and volunteer in different ways, um, so hopefully, even staff who might be retiring might come back and, um, help out, um, in those roles, okay, excellent, uh, in the future, um, so just very cool, yeah, you know, and, and as David's mentioned, I think, you know, neighboring towns are seeing what we're doing, uh, and everything, and looking to see what we're doing, stepping up, so, it's just awesome to see, you know, that it's growing and, and getting bigger, so just very cool to see all the involvement, so thank you to David, and to you, mayor, the staff, the, um, the volunteers, um, trustee Whitmore, um, everyone involved in, in doing that, and then, of course, uh, Julie, just thank you for everything, um, that you've done, uh, you know, one thing I think about early in my, um, tenure as a trustee, uh, was, you know, with Jan's passing, you know, I didn't know a lot about what went on, uh, behind the scenes, but I was definitely nervous, you know, what was gonna happen, you know, and, um, you know, that, that, I think your leadership really was so important, you know, and I know you say it was a team effort, but, but I know that, you know, your leadership was a big part in that team, um, being successful and seeing us through that time, um, and really seeing us through a lot of challenges, you know, first village manager, and then, you know, transition to another, you know, village manager, see us through COVID, so just thank you for everything you just did, um, during that time, um, reminding us to unmute, uh, you know, to, to get the roll call, um, during that, I know that was a big challenge, I want to definitely thank you for, um, I know that the times I've made stupid jokes and looked around to see if anyone was laughing, I could always count on you to be smiling, if no one else, I could count on you, so I appreciate that, uh, but honestly, I appreciate you anytime I called up or needed something, that I could count on you to have the answers and be able to help me with whatever I need, so thank you for everything, um, you know, I know we're gonna feel that hole, so I can only imagine what, you know, the staff and the community's gonna feel, so, so just know that, uh, you know, you are appreciated and, and, uh, and just thank you for everything.
Thank you, trustee McCarthy, trustee White.
Thank you, and, uh, I will say, Dana, that, uh, don't let the mayor drive the truck pulling Santa sleighs, because we showed him where the lights and the, uh, alarm was, and he had, he was blowing me out of the front.
Wife had a headache, did she?
Yeah, I had a headache too, so, anyway, um, Julie, I just want to congratulate you on your retirement and Donna too, I will say one thing, when you retire, please, don't volunteer, or, look, I need a job to relax, because I've been volunteering so many, with so many different things, I'm working harder than ever, but, uh, I appreciate, uh, your work and, uh, you know, the relationship that we had, especially talking about dollars.
Yep.
And tons, and markets. So, uh, you know, have a happy, uh, retirement, and Donna, you too, and a Merry Christmas, and a happy and healthy new year retirement.
Thank you, trustee White, trustee Levin.
Congratulations to Julie and Donna, I know you're both gonna be sorely messed, but congratulations, um, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we say.
Thank you, trustee Levin, trustee Maribella.
And, um, they don't know that, congratulations to Donna and Julie, hopefully, Julie's got these girls so where they can handle me when I come to here, so, hopefully. That is a tough one, but we are gonna miss you, uh, you've done a lot, uh, you've been here my whole, that member, I mean, you were here before I got here, and you've been here since, been here fifteen, so, it's been, it's been a good run, and you have stepped up in a lot of ways when there were most troubling times, so I hope you realize that, it's very